Hey, I'd like to call to all of the Kentucky Regional School Committee meeting of March 5th, 2019. What's your role call? Wayne Adams, yes. Joanna Blanchard.
Here.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Belzani.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor.
Here.
Chris Redding.
I'm here, but I have a daughter playing in layup game tonight, so I'm gonna leave after the budget goes through. I'm just wondering if you guys want to get up for me?
Well, congratulations to your daughter on assuming victory.
Okay, I understand. I understand.
Deana Trotta.
Here. Four point six.
Thank you. And if we could stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Agenda. Can I entertain a motion on the floor to accept this?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on the floor and second discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Taking a look, we get two sets of minutes. A joint meeting with the building committee, February 13th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed?
I wasn't there. So do I not?
That's right. We got an abstention over there. She did. Thank you. And the next one, February 5th, teaching, learning, and accountability. Do I have a motion? We do. Second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? No. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. We had a group of about 30 walk in. Is there anybody who wish to speak at this time? Known for well, you have another opportunity at the end.
So I'm just wondering where the district is considering some kind of a retirement incentive so that we could possibly save some of the teaching positions that are subject to cut. I understood that there was some conversation, and I'm just wondering where that, where it stands down.
I understand what you're asking, and I'm gonna pass this on. There has been a lot of discussion. Dr. Bob, calling you.
Sure. We're still working through numbers. Mr. Wen and I actually recently, yesterday, went back and forth on it. But he and I are working pretty close now.
So is there, the cuts that have been suggested, those would be brought, carried through, and then if there was some kind of a retirement incentive, the people who would have been low on the payroll would now have an opportunity to stay?
I can answer.
Do I need to use my microphone?
No, no, you're fine. So overall, the goal is ultimately, yes. The way I would view this is, we have teachers now who've been here one, two, three years who understand what I would call the Penn Tucket way because the veteran teachers helped educate them through on, and growing and developing. So what we would ideally like to happen is that they get to stay because other folks retire. Because the alternative to that is, they go somewhere else. And then when retirees do retire, we're bringing in brand-new people who do not know the Penn Tucket way as things. So that's ultimately the goal of what we're trying to get to.
So I just wanna say one more thing. Some of the people who were at least at the high school were on the, were on the low end, you know, in their first through third, three years, are some of the best teachers I've ever worked with. You know what I mean? And I literally am gonna be heartbroken if we cannot keep them. I've been teaching for 24 years. That's, I'm not joking, some of the best teachers I've ever had. And I'm just gonna be, like, really upset if they don't.
Yeah, I missed my step. This is one of the things, one of the reasons why we're trying to do whatever we can make it, because we've heard very much the same.
Thank you for your input. And I'll remind you once again, if you could identify yourself and keep it on between three and five minutes. That's my fault, not yours. And I'm gonna use my age as an excuse, if it is. And to keep it between three and five minutes, so if others ever wanna speak, they'll have ample opportunity. So we will have the second public comment at the end. Is there anyone else that would like to share with us? Yes?
Sabrina Simone and I, oh, sorry. Sabrina Simone and I, I'm one of the middle school counselors, and also vice president of the union and checking down the schools. I have a question about, just some of the line items. I don't know if now is a appropriate time, or if we want to vote here.
Well, we're gonna be voting on it tonight, probably.
So I, okay.
So if you want a quick input to hopefully be helpful in decision-making, by all means.
Well, I'm just concerned about some of the inaccuracies that are in the budget that are posted online. For example, and I know this is just one of many, and maybe other people can speak to the others, but for counseling staff, the budget states that we currently have five counselors at the high school and two at the middle school. Which is accurate, the middle school, you have two. So we don't have five at the high school. We have four, which includes the department head. And then the projected numbers for next year are, say, five at the high school and two at the middle school, which I think is inaccurate. So I'm just concerned about having the school committee vote on the budget with these inaccuracies. And if the financial, you know, part was based on those numbers, you know, that could potentially impact the world of it.
Hey, thank you. I wanna pass this to Greg, who, more often than not, it's how we put them on line items. And sometimes they're very difficult to read, especially for us as well.
We'll see. Well, Greg's looking that up. I was just coming. Yeah, I think the documents that go up, those are frozen in time. And that's hard, because while those are frozen in time, we're continuously making adjustments and changes. So in our world, those documents were posted in January at some point. There's been a lot of alterations that have been made. So, yeah, what we've been talking about lately and what's out there can be two very different things.
Yeah, it's, sometimes it's nothing more than a slide of how payroll does it. It could be a psychologist could be included in the counseling line, as they do it. I will tell you right now, whatever you see in that staffing pattern that's there now is there in next year's budget. There's nothing being reduced, there's nothing being added when it comes to psychologists and counseling. The number of bodies.
They are saying what we have this year is gonna be identical for next year.
Yeah, there's no, there's no adjustments in that area.
Another point.
I mean, I just, but it says we have more council staff than we actually do.
Well, again, like I said, it may be a psychologist that's being lumped into the counseling staff.
I don't think so. And I obviously have to.
It could be a reading teacher. It really, it depends how.
Does that have guidance?
No, it's a staffing slot. When we create that thing, it comes off of how payroll runs it. So, and it'll always be different, how we classify it and how payroll classifies it. My basic run is, I try to, I have them list everybody who's on payroll, and I make sure everybody that's on payroll gets in the budget in some sort of line. That's, and my, what payroll calls it and what I call it may be two different things sometimes, so they don't always quite line up.
So unfortunately, I think that has been a little confusing, and, you know, hopefully school committee members at least maybe understand a little better than we have, but I appreciate your clarity.
Yeah, but, I mean, if that body is in a seat now, that body is going to be there next year in those particular categories.
I'd like to speak on her behalf. I have a question.
That's something in the past we've tried to stop. We have several school committee members wanna talk, and either refute that or try to explain it to you. For seven years, I've heard it from Greg, a science major, have no background in business. I did it seven years ago, and I don't quite understand it now, but I know at the end, when he says, "What it is is the same as what we had," he's never gone back on that. So if it's perplexing to you, good, you're normal. All right? Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Kate Wood, P.E. for BART here. I guess I just need some clarity with some of the information from the last meeting and from what we've seen online. I guess we've understood that all the specials at the elementary level will be cut down to two in every subject except for arts, and there will be three. And that the extra person is being used to teach STEM to the lower grades. Is that true?
Greg, can you handle that one?
Actually, I'm gonna rotate that one to your left.
Sure. A lot of love to this.
I'm not sure what you mean by the extra person.
Well, this year, we've had three of every special, but we've heard through the past three years, so three of all of them, including media. And we have had, I believe, three STEAM teachers within the district to teach at the lower level.
Sorry. Two STEAM and one IV. Two STEAM and one IV.
Oh, okay. That's right. So next year, we have been told that there will be two of P, media, and music, that there will be three of, all right, this is.
Just go ahead, just go ahead, that's fine.
I've been told that there's going to be, am I right? Three media, I'm sorry. Three of art, and that we're going to be regional specialists. Yet we won't be at our own schools like we were before every day. And that there will now be two STEAM people that will be going to other schools as well. Is that?
That sounds accurate. Yep, in the description, yep.
Okay. So I just have a question. I know one music teacher's retiring, so that's why it wasn't, you know, that's why it's staying at two. Are the two new, are the STEAM positions two new positions that people have to apply to?
We don't believe they're new positions. We have STEM coordinators who would be in that, being able to do those jobs. And it could end up being one, as we may continue to perform.
All right. I just have a question. We've been talking as elementary specialists. By making us regional specialists as opposed to, say, we at our school, and making us change schools as well as the STEAM teachers also change schools, I guess I have a concern of why we couldn't stay where we are, all of us being our own school teachers, our own specials at our schools. I don't see a cost increase in that, but I guess I just wanted to be known that we feel like nine people are being displaced from schools. And I'm wondering, what is the gain in educational experience for our students? I guess we gain or loss, whichever way you wanna call it, for financial, and just the impact of the communities that the specialists change in schedules will power the school. Because it will very much impact programs we, I know myself, we have that age, that we're going to lose. So I guess it's more of a statement than a question, a little bit.
Well, I'm happy that you provide some context and answer.
Right. So I guess I just want you to think about that before you vote, that to look at the balance and if it really works, what.
And I would also point out that the school committee is not gonna be voting on positions, right? The school committee's gonna vote on the budget number. And there's still opportunities for us to, what we've discussed is kind of our plan moving forward, and has gotten the budget to where it is.
Okay, I guess we just feel like we haven't been able to speak really that much about it, and we just really want a voice heard, so that you can think of the impact. And I know you're concerned about the budget, and we understand all of that, but also the impact, I wanna think of what it's gonna change for other schools, for the teachers, and for the students.
Thank you.
Yep.
I could show you the two gentlemen to my left. That has been a major discussion on their plan of attack. And it's ongoing, just as we said, this is to vote on the number, and that those things can change, and further discussion and input goes on. Elsa? Okay, let's go on to new business then. A, F Y 20. Mr. Labret, way to.
Sure. Thank you. As we spoke about last Tuesday, I had spoken about a recommended number, and I was waiting for some feedback from one town, Grohlman. I've gotten that feedback now. That is, we are going to put it in the budget with your recommended reduction at the $294,000 approximate reduction from the budget book, without a, without a cost increase and a tax increase to the people through override. To do that, there's some recommended cuts within the budget, and we have yet to meet with their finance committee to see if they're on board with that, but the finance director has indicated that it should be okay. So the number that we handed out last week with the little bits and changes of it would work out to, with the reductions in the cover sheet that we passed out last week, would result in a final budget of $40,736,874, again, with these adjustments. Just speaking real quickly, I know there's been some concern I've heard about with some members of the school committee maybe having family members or things within this budget. Obviously, we're three fairly small communities, we're the largest employer by far, we're going to have this issue occasionally, so I just wanna state for the record that how this works is, there are two line items that affect members of this community, but if, unless they're being debated, there is no need for anybody to leave the room or anything. You're allowed to vote on the bottom line, no problem. I will tell you what those two lines are. If you guys wish to debate those two actual numbers and lines, those two members can leave the room and we can talk about. Other than that, they can remain and we just move on our merry way. There are lines, 258, which is the school resource officer. Actually, it's not an employee of ours. We pay the town of West Newbury, and they pay the resource officer to be here. But that person is a relation of one of the members of the committee. So if no one wishes to debate that line item, it's fine. The second one isn't a line item in the budget. It's a teacher who is paid for out of one of the revolving accounts through the pre-kindergarten fee system, but through, by just being open and honest, we're letting you know that person is an employee here, but it's not a line item in the budget. So I suppose I should ask everybody, if everybody is okay with those two particular lines, we can just move on our merry way. Anybody have any concern over those two particular lines?
I'm fine.
Is there anyone else out there? Is there? You all set?
Yes.
Okay, can we move on?
You all set?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So basically then, at this time, with the reductions I, and adjustments, I should say, we made from last year, and again, we're still kind of waiting on the GIC. This is, they voted their numbers last Thursday, and for some reason, they're being very particular about giving them out. I had Pay, K. Shepard, our payroll person, hound them for me today a little bit. And when we finally got back, is they're not prepared to release them until later this week or early next week, but they gave out averages. They were saying, "One of our plans is gonna go up 11 percent. Three of them are gonna go up 6 percent, and the rest of them are only going up 1 percent."
Okay.
So based upon that, and I kinda know, based, when they say that, I kinda know which ones it's gonna be. I did a quick extrapolation, and I think that the numbers we're talking about here as a reduction are fine. So I don't have any qualms about voting the number as we proposed. So I guess at this time, unless anybody has any more comments or questions, I'll entertain them now.
Okay.
Then I guess we ask for a motion to approve a fiscal year 20 budget of that number in yellow.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve a budget for fiscal year 20 of $40,736,874.
Second.
We got a second. A motion on the floor, discussion. Deana?
I just wanna say that I, I know we've really tried to do this, and you have done an awesome job, and thank you. But I do, I hope we can work on for next year, kind of figuring out discussions, because I think it's really important we try to keep people together in their schools. And I know a lot of the school programs and stuff have, you know, because, and she has done an awesome job, and they all have an awesome job, and I just hope that we can make it, so those things can still keep going and can work with everyone.
Thank you, Deana.
Come on, anyway, there's no one. Ah, there it is.
No more comments? Okay. There's a motion on the floor? All those that are, a proposed motion? Again?
Ananomous.
Ananomous, okay. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The Cessna letters will be produced tomorrow, they'll be hand-delivered to the towns by the end of the week.
Thank you, Greg. This brings us to new business spot B, math curriculum sequence change. I'm gonna give a guess. Brent, you gonna handle this one?
Presenting this, initially sort of giving you the head guts that we're working on, and then looking forward, maybe two meetings ago, both P.E. department chairs along with the middle school principal, can talk to you about that curriculum changes. And in further discussion, feeling like it's a fairly sizable curriculum shift, and felt it was appropriate that the committee and the administration vote on that shift that we presented.
So moved, okay. We have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'm present.
For the math curriculum sequence change.
To approve the math curriculum sequence change as presented by Mr. Kelly and the math department chair at our meeting a couple weeks ago.
Second. Second? And we got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed. Well, this next one is kinda curious, hasn't come up in recent weeks or years. I see we got the, we've been offered to join Havrell on a crew team. Who wants to address this? Did it love it? Get to you.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very interesting opportunity. It actually started, there's, Havrell has been using the Grohlman voting ramp down at the Pines for a couple of years for their crew club. And most recently, I was at a horse sleightman meeting, and our athletic director, Dan Thornton, was there as well. But at that meeting, this group had presented, because they're looking to build a boathouse in the Pines to store their, store their boats. And one of the questions that the sleightman had asked, and this group, Havrell, had actually reached out to Dan Thornton, and he gave us some minimal information, but one of the questions the sleightman asked was, "Well, you're using our property, are Penn Tucket students going to be able to participate?" And they said, "Yes, they would be interested in having Penn Tucket as part of collaborative crew, just like we do with wrestling with Newbury Port." And of course, the concern we had was, it's one expense. And the cost is actually, it's approximately at least $100 for each athlete that would want to participate in crew. The goal is, so everything would be, take place at the Grohlman Pines. You can see the details here. They've got four eight-man boats and four four-man boats, and they, the athletes will practice three days a week on the water, two days, two days a week off the water. I would like to explain what that is, but I don't know what that means. All I know is it sounds like, as my knowledge of crew is that they are very hard-working students that are hopping there into those boats. And future expenses are there. If we, if the program grows because our students have an interest in that program, then we would look to probably hire more coaches. Personally, I think it's a tremendous opportunity to offer to, at least, have an opportunity like that. It's very.
I have one question.
I have a question and a comment. First of all, I think the, because it mentioned in there that they have some ERs, so I think that some of the off-training is both strength training at, like, the dry land, you know, the throttle machine, easily increase their speed. But like, the, one of the audits or things that had been done in the past year or so, talks to us about reducing athletic fees to make sure that things are accessible to all students. Isn't that, and, Greg?
Well, in, I believe it was four years ago, we reduced the athletic fees by 50% and the family cap by 50%, district-wide on all sports. I think what you're talking about here is adding a new sport to the list and determining what that fee would be.
Right, no, my question would, I thought we were working, at some point in the past year, there's been a conversation about working towards further reducing athletic fees.
Oh, we've had that conversation back and forth year after year, yeah.
Okay. So I just didn't know if this was in line of how I still react, why did $100 seem like a great, large amount of?
Clubs and participation, we made zero at that time, and helped to fray the cost on the new athletic facilities at the time, when we reduced the athletic fees of 50%. And as Mr. Labret said, it's been thrown out every year. We'd love to have zero for everyone. I do have a question myself, but I'm gonna let you guys ask your question first, Ethan.
Yeah, I just wanted to show you.
All right. Joanna?
So I believe what Emily's referring to is, there was a report that came out recently that said our participation rate in athletics amongst lower-income students was lower, and that that was something that we had to remedy. I think that's what the report said. And so Dr. Mulqueen said, "Perhaps you're gonna have to be looking at lowering the fees in order to increase that participation rate." Because I remember this report that you're talking about, it just came out shortly before Dr. Mulqueen left. And so, that, I think that's what you are talking about.
They did things on gender plus social.
That was the Title IX review?
Yeah.
Yeah, that came out of the Title IX review. And, yeah, that comment is correct, but what people, we try to get it out there, and I'm sure the athletic department lets them know, that is, if you are in a low-income situation or have a financial thing.
Right.
There is a mechanism for us to reduce or eliminate that fee. So, I mean, this would apply, this would apply as well, because it's a high school sport. We don't do it for anything other than high school, because that's where the required athletics is. I guess my question real quick, is this going to be a new sport we add, or is it a club?
This is a sport.
It's gonna be a sport. There we list, male and female, so we don't have a Title IX issue. So I guess then.
And $100 is not, that's for Havrell that's charged. So we have to pay what Havrell?
Well, they'll pay us, and we'll write a check to Havrell. That's the new process under that Title IX report that we use. I guess, but so I just wanted to make sure that that cost was gonna cut, that's the fee to Havrell. And I believe Dan said, "We already have buses going to the Pines anyways, these kids would just get on them." So that's, yeah, that's.
And there is one potential loss, which is looking fine, because for any student-athlete, my understanding is that we cap at $500 a year.
Yep. A child doing this most likely was going to play another sport anyways.
That's correct.
So it's one sport or another. Either way, that shouldn't have too much of a variation on us.
Phil?
What is the total, I mean, I think this is a great opportunity. I think it kind of brings us forward in line with other schools, but my questions, and it's a couple grouped together, what would be the salary of the coach? Because if it's a sport, then that's the salary. And I think the part B of that question is, what's the total cost to the district of the program?
So for us, going into this year, it's $100 per student is the total cost. If we have huge interest and we have to hire an additional coach, that's beyond what he currently has. Right now, they're paying for the cost, because again, Grohlman is allowing them to use, I bet, so.
Not to be a spoiler, but we've just been talking about teachers traveling due to financial restraints and having to be very careful with the budget and public perception-wise.
Sure, absolutely.
Where we're having teachers travel because of different financial realities, and at the same time, we're adding something, something has to give somewhere. So I think that my only concern would be to make sure, and as I know it's a concern of yours, that the educational fundamentals, especially prior to high school and middle school, get taken care of before we incur, for example, a coach gets for a season, what, $20,000, give or take?
No.
What school are you going to?
I wanna go to the.
Well, I threw out a number, okay, adjust that one.
The highest-paid coaches, football coaches.
So I guess, so if I, if I adjust my answer, I would, I would be very hard-pressed to add something on when what we talked about is taking place. In this instance, it's $100 per student.
It's a no-brainer.
That comes, right, that comes from that student. So it should be, it'll be close to $0.
So we're not paying any coaches or anything out of us.
And I think to say that upfront, especially in this meeting, is very important.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna throw this out. As far as taking on costs for this year, it's little or nothing. As far as transportation goes, for this year, we've been told it's gonna be little or nothing. But that doesn't speak for the years down the road. You're way off of the coach's salaries, but we actually, when they decide coach's salaries, use the boils down to length of.
I'm just thinking of what I got paid as cheerleader advisor as a club, so I just want.
And it will be highly costly, and if we end up paying for transportation down the And it will be highly costly, and if we end up paying for transportation down the road, too, yes, it would be the same or more expense. My other thing I want to throw out to you is, this being a water sport, and I was always involved with insurance and athletics, and if this would cause our liability premium to go up since it's a water sport, I don't know that, because very few of the K-PAN league teams have crew.
The school that actually came up with board of selectmen, and they are fully covered, and they actually have, they're required to have boats out there to check on the different spots where...
But individual schools would have to be covered.
Yeah, I talked to Greg.
Well, it's, we're already covered for swimming and diving as well, those are water sports, so we have those type of things in our, I certainly can call the insurance, I can't imagine it would make a lot of difference to us, if at all, because we're already covered for athletics, for all types of things.
Questions?
Joanna?
Yeah, I have two more questions. First, for the two days a week of off-water workouts, is that going to be here or at Haverhill High?
Haverhill.
So we'll be transporting to Haverhill?
I mean, if they, if they want to come here, use here, if we have the space, I don't mind.
Okay, but we're transporting to Haverhill? And the second question is, because I know this is probably going to be in the paper, is it for this spring? And if it's for this spring, students will be allowed to sign up, because the spring sports start in a couple of weeks, so...
We're not anticipating there'll be big numbers because of such late notice...
Yeah.
Because it came so late to the board of selectmen. But I want, I told Mr. Thornton, I did not want him to advertise until I had the conversation with everyone here.
Okay.
And we were, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Okay.
Historically, I don't normally disagree with you, but new sport, kids get excited, and I think you might be mistaken on the numbers that might come on there, so that's a good thing.
So will you be sending an email out to tell the students about, just for anybody who's going to be reading this?
Yeah, Mr. Thornton will do it.
Okay.
I will send them a message as soon as we're done here.
Okay.
So you want us to, whoop, sorry, Mr. Hodges.
As I read this, is it accurate that the present coaching staff, regardless of how many Penntucket kids, is going to be coming from the Haverhill High School anyway? Is that true?
Okay.
So we're not going to be paying for any coaches? This is going to be a personal check written out by each parent that wants their kid to participate?
Okay.
Thank you.
It says Haverhill High School, but it says Penntucket student athletes. Is that middle and high school for us, or is that...
Well, it's just high schools.
Just high school.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it male and female?
Yes.
It's quite an operation. I've seen them down at the Pines.
One of the things they really talked about in their presentation, board of selectmen, is that, you know, crew's a pretty unique sport, nowhere in North Carolina, southern colleges is being done. So for high schools to do this, it's also an opportunity for students who are decent at scholarship opportunities, which is, which is nice.
To those Ivy League schools. But Emily?
I would also like to say that one reason that I'm in favor of this is that we provide a lot of team sports, and that that's not the right choice for every student. I think this is an opportunity for kids who might not be as comfortable in a bigger team environment, and this is also a thing that's a lifelong athletic opportunity that a lot of the things, you know, we have kids who might play soccer or basketball, and they're worried that that's not necessarily going to be a piece of fashion, or something that they can do until they're 50 or 80, and crew is, and I think that that's a really good strategy.
We have staff who still...
Any more comments? Now, you want a decision on it tonight with a vote?
Please.
So then I would have to entertain a motion on the floor.
A motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. All those in favor of Penntucket Regional School District offering crew at this time for this school year, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passed, thank you very much. Let's keep those numbers under 200. I hate that policy. All right, the follow-up entry plan findings. Dr. Barfala, you?
So last week, when I presented, I mentioned I was going to come back this week to see if there was anything in those before I posted them, bringing the video to post up, well, adjustments or other questions that anybody might have.
Pretty thorough.
This is about the quickest we've ever had.
I tried.
Good deal. So this brings us to a second public comment. Jen, do you have any comment on that? Nope, no questions? Yes, I'll back to the right once again. And welcome back to you.
Yes.
Mike Reddell here.
No, I heard that.
Identify, and we've got a bell.
I'm Andy Wiles, I teach here at the high school, the math department. I'm curious if there's a written copy of the curriculum change that you wrote up.
It was previously submitted in the press, I mean, the package would be available online.
To Bill Borland?
Yep, in one of the school committee packets.
Okay. Would the medical department have that?
Uh, it wouldn't need.
The other lady to the left, come on down again.
This is my last comment, it's Kate Wood, and it's from the... And I think it's wonderful, too, I think it's, I think it was a wonderful, I was going to go down physically, so I think it's great that we do that, and the idea of team sports versus an individual sport, and the whole idea of promoting, there are great colleges that offer annual scholarships for something like that, but it made me think, there are some great schools that offer great arts scholarships, scholarships, music, and so many of the specials, I want to keep that in mind as we go along in the budget and positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Others, yes?
Hi, Ms. Estes, I am a business teacher at the middle and high school. I just wanted to say, I really hope that as, you know, five seasons continues in years to come, if I'm not here, because I am one to be cut, I hope that there becomes a bigger emphasis on business, because it's a very, very big necessity, especially in the 21st century, and, yeah, I hope that everybody keeps that in mind. Thank you.
And just one point of note, Ms. Estes had a group of freshmen for DECA competition, and they were hugely successful. This, this is the first year you've had DECA?
Yes, we're going, so I have five students, one is new.
So, yeah, and it's entirely freshmen, correct?
Yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment at this time? No? Well, this brings us into the executive session. So, executive session, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Director of intensive and supplemental services...
Justin?
We will not be back.
That's Mike.
Ah, Mr. Hodges. So we need a roll call.
We need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Now with a roll call.
We need a second.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, Emily.
Yeah.
Dina?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Phil?
Yep.
Okay, we will not be back.